Good evening. We on, Lisette?
Uh, just one moment, sir. Yes, we're on.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the September Town Council meeting. It's the final budget hearing and the regular Town Council meeting.
First budget hearing.
I said first budget hearing.
You said final.
Oh, excuse me.
Sounded a good.
Same thing then. I meant, first budget hearing and regular Town Council meeting. Today's date is September 17th, 2019. Meeting officially called to order, 7:00 PM. Time is approximately 7:08. Meeting officially called to order. A roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Member Einstein. Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Perfect. If everyone could please rise. Chief, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Can everyone please face the flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to welcome everybody this evening. Kind of lot to go over this evening, but first, we're going to move right into the first budget hearing for the 2019-2020 budget. First, we're going to go the adoption of the proposed combined millage rate and the proposed official operating budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, adopting the final millage rate of the Town of Golden Beach for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020 pursuant to Florida Statute 200.065 TRIM Bill, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Just give me one second to get organized. These guys put so much on my plate.
We have two, we have actually two items that constitute the overall budget hearing. One is the millage and the other is the budget. And what we've done in the past years is to read both items together, conduct the hearing jointly, and then take a vote at the end on each item separately. So, if we could, Mayor, we should also read the title to the...
Second item on the agenda, which is...
Yeah, to the tentative budget.
Okay. Second item is number two, resolution of Town Council adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, adopting the final budgets for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020 pursuant to Florida Statute 200.065 TRIM Bill and providing for an effective date.
Perfect.
The... So, we, so you have both items. The tentative budget and the proposed millage rate have now been publicly announced. We will conduct a public hearing on both of those, and at the conclusion of that, we'll vote on the millage first and then the budget second. The only thing that I'd like to do now before we begin...
Is just to go through the millage?
I want to just, yes. I'd like, if you, if you want, would like to read it, you can.
So, the proposed millage rate for the Town of Golden Beach for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, be ready and fixed at the rate of 7.5780 mils, which is 7.5780 dollars per $1,000 of assessed property value within the Town of Golden Beach. The rollback rate is 7.3323, and the proposed millage rate is 7.4800 mils, which is 3.35% over the rollback rate. That the voted debt service millage rate will be .8220 mils. That the final budget hearing will adopt the final millage rate and the budget for the fiscal year will be on Thursday, October 26, 7:00 PM.
Mayor, we're going to be asking that we move that meeting to 6:00 PM if it's okay with the council, if there's a general consensus, because that, that meeting, we have the budget, we have the Civic Center Master Plan, we have the A1A corridor study, we have the Water Department, and we possibly have people on us.
What day?
So, Thursday, next Thursday to 26, it's, right now, it's scheduled for 7:00. It's not part of the TRIM notice, so we're allowed to move it so long as we set it today. We'd like to move it to 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM. It's going to be, it's going to be, there's a lot of discussion items on that meeting.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Jaime, is that good with you?
Give me one second.
The 20, the 26, at 6:00?
It's next Thursday. Right now, it's scheduled for 7:00. We'd like to move it to 6:00 if possible.
And we need 100% attendance.
That's correct.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Hold on one second. Is that good with everyone? Ken, I heard you. Good?
Yeah, that's the 26.
Jaime, good?
Yep.
That's the 26?
Yes.
Next Thursday at 7:00.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, good. We change the meeting for Thursday, 26. Okay, Town Manager, you want to proceed?
Sure. Mayor, residents, guests, so as it is our tradition every year, we'd like to present these towns' operating budget and capital budget and our business plan. Before we get into next year's number, that's kind of like to give you an overview as to where we are this year. If you remember earlier in the year, there's a, there's an item on the agenda, on your dais, that shows where we stand fiscally in terms of our fund balance. As you know, this year, we've done some cleanup items. The town's fund balance was reduced in half because we wrote off some of our expenditures. Currently, we anticipate having a fund balance of about $991,000. And that's an important number to keep in mind because this council is pledging 1.2 million of your fund balance that's currently sitting at $991,000 for your Civic Center Master Plan. We do anticipate this year to have a savings, it's not a, a savings of only about $150,000. And why only $150,000? Because this year, through your action, you've, you've added new projects, like the Millionaire Resurfacing Project, the Pickleball Court Project, the Roof Repairs. So, we do anticipate a operating savings of about $152,000. You know, there's some question as to whether or not that savings or that money that we have in the budget that we allocated intentionally to grow the fund balance. It's a combination of both. In our budget, every year, we overfund certain line items so we can realize a growth to our fund balance. We have a stated goal of getting our fund balance to over $1.5 million, knowing that you're going to allocate 1.2 of it for your new Civic Center. So, in order for us to meet that growth aggressively in your budget every year, we try to grow your fund balance by having quote-unquote savings so we can grow the fund balance. This year will be the lowest year that we've had in, in the last 13 years. Typically, we have a savings of about $300,000. This year, we're only about $150,000. So, keep that in mind as we talk about this coming year budget. Couple other quick things that's on the dais. If you look at the variance report, not the one that was emailed to you, forget the one that was emailed to you, but if you look at the variance report that's on the dais, we do have a little some here for the audience if you'd like to see it. This variance report is by department, and it's separated by department. It shows you your actuals for last year, so where we actually spent and what we actually spent last year. That's in the left-hand column. And then on the right-hand column is currently, is where we are year-to-date. As a reminder as to what happens every year. So, after the fiscal year closes on September 30, the Finance Department and myself, along with the auditors, will go back and re, will audit the books for the, for last year, and will bring to you any items that require adjustments to the budgets in case any budget goes over, as a reminder what our business policies and our fiscal policies are. Number one, the Town Administration has a spending policy of up to $25,000. That means that I am, I am allowed, so long as Mayor Singer authorizes it, allowed to spend $25,000 on any single purchase or any single service for any of our projects. That authority is vested in me through your ordinances. We also have the authority to move money up and down within the department budget. We cannot move money in between department budgets. So, as we go through the department budgets and you ask questions such as, you know, are there, are there, are there areas in the budget that we can sharpen our pencils? The answer to that is yes, and we'll go through what some of those items are, but I'm allowed to move money up and down, not side-by-side. In our budget, we also have internal controls in terms of what money can be spent on what programs. We do not have a line-item budget, and I need, I need to make sure that the council and the residents understand that. We have what they call a fund accounting budget, and we have categories within our department funds that allows us to allocate our dollars. Our, our budget is not a line-item budget. So, keep that in mind as we go through the budget this, this evening. For your edification, I do have all the department directors in the audience tonight. I'd like to introduce them real briefly, starting with your Town Clerk, Lisette Perez, your Finance Director, Maria Camacho, your Police Chief, Chief Rudy Urbello, your Director of Resident Services, Mr. Michael Glidden, the Director of Public Versus Sanitation, Mr. Kirk McCoy, the Director of Rose Trees and General Facilities, Mr. Ken Jones, and your Building Director, Ms. Linda Epperson. They're here tonight to answer any questions that you may have about their business plans, their objectives, and their initiatives for the coming year. They will not be here at the final budget hearing. So, tonight will be the night that if you have any questions about what the goals of the departments are, to ask those questions tonight. They will not be here next Thursday. So, before we get started with the actual budget, let's talk about our millage rate. So, as you know, for the last 13 years, we have tried to maintain our combined millage rate. In Golden Beach, we speak of a combined rate. We do not speak in individual rates. As you know, our combined rate is a combination of the operating millage and the debt service millage. And every year, for the last three years, we've tried to keep that millage rate at an 8.4 mils. Question from our residents and questions from our council throughout this, this summer is, can we lower that millage rate? The answer to that is absolutely. We can do whatever the community wants. The reality is that we have stated goals and objectives that require us not to lower that rate. And why do we ask that we not lower that rate? One, the first stated goal is to increase our fund balance from $900,000 to at least five, 1.5 million, knowing that we need to allocate 1.2 for your new Civic Center. So, if we lowered the millage rate, we wouldn't have operating savings in the current fiscal year to grow that fund balance. In your, in your, in your best interest, here's what we do as an administration. Rather than say, wow, we have all this flush of new money coming in, let's go spending crazy, we actually put internal controls in our budget that says, we can't spend certain money. So, this year, we saw a real, an increase of about $500,000 because our assessed values grew. And so, what we said is, we're going to take the first $242,000 of that new money, set it aside, we're not spending it. It's money that can be rebated back to our residents, but we don't think that's the appropriate business course of action to do. We set it aside in restricted funds. So, the operating millage we're proposing this year is 7.5780, and the debt service is .822. The great news about the debt service is that that, that service, this is the first year that we go back to our level service of funding. Our debt service obligation for the next 27 years is fixed at the $904,000 payment. So, that's what it's going to be, that's what our debt service obligation's going to be. If, as a reminder, over the last three years, we had debt service savings because we refinanced our debt service, our, our general obligation bond, and those savings were actually materialized and we used them for projects over the last two years, like the Civic, the, the Police Gate House and the Beach Pavilion. So, our combined millage rate is 8.4 mils, and we do have a restricted fund of $242,000. Any question on the millage? As it relates to, as it relates to the town's outstanding liabilities, we currently have two outstanding liabilities, and we're possibly going to take on an additional two. The first is our, is our GEO bond that we issued in 2008. We currently have an outstanding balance of about $12,500,000 on that one. The other one is the SRF loan for $1,507,000. Now, when I talk about the two new debts, we are looking to secure another $1.2 million through the State Revolving Loan Fund. That's for your Center Island Pump Station. On November 13, Ms. Camacho and I will be going to Tallahassee to represent us at the funding meeting, asking for that money to be allocated to the town. That's November 13. So, if we secure that 1.2 million dollar for the project that you already approved, we'll do a budget amendment to allocate those dollars. The State Revolving Loan Fund interest rate right now is currently at about 2%. That's currently the interest rate at the SRF level. We are asking them to amend our current loan to take on that additional debt. If we are turned down, then we need to look at other funding sources for Center Island Pump Station. And as you know, the Center, as you know, stormwater pump stations or stormwater funding gets paid for by your Stormwater Utility Fee Fund 430, and we'll get to that in a, later on this evening. The other new debt that we're looking to take on is a $4 million line of credit secured by a budget to covenant for the anticipated approval of your new Civic Center Complex Master Plan. And we're going to go into a lot more detail about the Civic Center Master Plan at the next meeting, but right now, we're anticipating another approximately $4 million, two of it, which will be secured and paid back by our LETF funds, and two of it, which will be paid for through your unallocated non-advalorem revenues that are in your budget. So, we're looking to take on approximately another $5 million, bring the total debt obligation to $18 million. Why is it not in the budget? We can't put it in the budget until we secure those funds. So, once those funds are actually secured and encumbered, then we will do a budget amendment to increase your budget. The reason I'm speaking about it tonight is, we don't want any of our residents to think that we're trying to hide something from them. Those are, those are two new obligations that we are looking to secure in this current fiscal year. Any questions about the town's debt or potential indebtedness? Moving on.
What's going to be the debt service on the $4 million a year?
Well, we anticipate it, if we're, once we pay down the original $2 million, we anticipated to be anywhere between $11,000 to $14,000 a month. We have allocated $282,000, so we're probably going to see about $100,000 difference in terms of our savings. So, we're looking at about $180,000 a year.
The first $2 million is going to be, for the first two years...
Should the council approve that?
Interest only. That's what we're looking at.
For the state or...
Till we get reimbursed, but we'll go through it.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, and we will bring to you at the October meeting, the financing for those projects.
Okay.
The rate we're getting right now is very low. The other one is...
So, the State Revolving Loan Fund right now is quoting at about 2%. And right now, our indicative rates, we've met with five different private providers for the $4 million, we're looking at a competitive rate, anywhere from 2.65 to 3%. Very competitive rates right now. The market's in our favor to secure this funding for these projects.
And the reason the state, we can only get a certain amount from the state?
So, the state money's only available for water-related projects and stormwater-related projects. So, they don't lend money just for building projects. The State Revolving Loan Fund is money set aside for water-related...
So, how do we, you got some creative way to tie it?
No, we are doing, we're doing a storm...
We're doing this, we're doing this in our pump station.
Oh, that too, that is, okay. Got it.
Sorry. So, that's kind of where we are, where we stand on debt and where our potential new debt. There are budget assumptions throughout the budget that I want to just get off, so we know what the assumptions are from the very beginning. This year, we are proposing a 3% cost of living increase to our employees. Let me remind the council what we did in 2008. In 2008, this council and this administration told our employees, you will never see a merit increase from us unless the job that you do changes in nature. So, in most communities, I would say 90% of the communities, if not 99% of the communities, employees receive a cost of living increase and typically a merit increase for doing a good job. In Golden Beach, we don't do that. So, where some employees can potentially see up to an 8% raise on an annual basis, the maximum we've given in Golden Beach is 3% cost of living increases. But we do do something that most cities do not do. At the end of the year, if there are, if there's enough savings in our budget and if our employees have met satisfactory evaluations, we do give one-time bonuses. The benefit to one-time bonuses to our employees, to the town, are great. Bonuses are non-pensionable, they do not increase your liability, and they're one-time to the employee. That means that the employee did a good job this year, they got rewarded for that, and that, that being, doing a good job in one year does not compound annually. It avoids us having sanitation workers that are collecting $80,000 in retirement. Most cities, when they give a cost of living increase and a merit increase, you have employee costs that are out, out of control. We stopped that in 2008. So, this year, the mayor and I recommend a 3% cost of living increase to our employees. We do have a 5% insurance increase. That's because of the insurance policies that you agreed to at the last council meeting. We are adding one full-time position to the Building Department. That's part of our attrition program. As we know, our Building Department has done a stellar job, but it's time for us to start looking at how we're going to be able to maintain the Building Department on a moving-forward basis. So, we are recommending one full-time employee in the Building Department. We're also increasing our pension contribution from 25, which is what the actual area report requires that we fund it, at 25, we're recommending 30%. Why are we doing that? Currently, we have an unfunded liability in our pension of about $1.2 million. It is our goal to try to work that number down. We find it irresponsible if we don't start to try to get that unfunded liability number down. What does that number mean? That means if every single one of our employees were to retire today, we would have to buy $1.2 million, sell property, sell this building, to meet that unfunded liability, which is what's required by the state. So, Mayor Singer and I believe that it's in our best interest and in the community's best interest to try to draw that number down so that we're responsible to the communities, the councils that may serve after we leave our tenure. So, we are overfunding it by 5%, and that's because we want to control that unfunded liability line item. There are $25,000 in new insurance premium costs that are not employee-related. So, this year, kudos...
On that little aspect, did the auditors ever say anything about the unfunded liability?
No, I mean, it's always, it's always a note in the audit, but again, we find, we have found that that number has increased through the years, and we'd like to start to put a, we have to have a fiscal, responsible approach to how we manage our pension and how we manage our employee obligations. And so, by, by putting aside money to try to draw that number down, we're not passing the buck to another administration. It's very easy for me and for Mayor Singer to say, look, that $200,000 can be better spent on other programming and let some other council 15 years from now worry about that, but that's not being fiscally responsible or fiscally prudent.
And the auditors don't say anything. What happens is the actuary gives us a actual number, and then the auditors just look at the number.
I remember 15 years ago, we were really upside down.
And, and the other thing is, kudos to the Pension Board. Our pension has actually, we exceeded $10 million this year. Our pension is very healthy. It's a very secure pension. The Chairperson of the Pension Board is Ms. Epperson. She's done a great job with that board for the last 13 years, and our pension is stellar. But that unfunded liability, because most of our employees, and this is the downfall of my administration, most of our employees are now staying here, right? Whereas before, they used to leave, right? So, when the employees left, there's extra money in the pension. Now, no one wants to leave. They love working for Golden Beach. They find that our employers treat us well. We treat our employees well. And so, our employees tend not to want to leave. They get, they want to stay their full tenure till they're vested, and then most of them want to stay even longer. So, because our, because we have a very low attrition rate, our responsibilities of pension have continued to grow. And so, that's one of the cons of having such a stellar workplace, is that the employees don't want to move on, so your, your liabilities continue to grow. That's why we're trying to address that through the budget.
Everybody leaves, don't they take their...
Only, only, only if they leave before the 10 years. So, if you're a non-vested employee, you take the contribution that you put into the pension at a rate, at a growth rate of 5%. If you hit the 10 years, your money stays here until you meet retirement age, and then you could draw your money at retirement age.
Our vested is 10 years.
We have a 10-year vesting period, correct.
What percentage is currently funded?
It's about 98%.
98%.
And what's the typical, because I'm pretty sure that's very high for municipalities, right?
It is.
Yes.
What's the typical, what's the norm?
I don't think there is a norm.
I don't think there's a, there's not a state requirement.
There's not like a norm, but I mean, anything above 75% I think's pretty healthy.
And, and for us...
98, you said?
Yeah.
And for us, and for us, the reason I made it an issue this year is, for a community like Miami Beach or Surfside, $1 million, they just find it in their reserves, right? $1.2 million is a big chunk of number for us that we don't have in our reserves. And so, we've got to try to keep a manageable number in terms of our unfunded liabilities and our reserve numbers. And like I stated to you back at the April meeting I think it was, we are trying to grow our reserves, and we're trying to minimize our liabilities at the same time.
And is that you have to keep contributing at this amount?
No.
So, it's a reverse...
Yeah, this year, I think we're...
Our obligation is 25%, and we're doing 30.
We're doing 30. I think from here on, we should be good at 25% as long as there's no hiccups.
Okay. The next observation is, there's a 25% increase in our non-employee-related insurance. So, this year, we did one, something that we haven't done in about a good 10 years. Maria worked with a third-party consultant who did a full evaluation of all of our, all of our potential liabilities. So, all of the new furniture that we've added, all of the new buildings that we've added, the changing of equipment, all of our street signs, our street lighting, our trees, everything that we own, we actually did an audit and added it to our insurance books. And so, we've, we have a net increase of $25,000 to cover all those materials. And it's important that we did that because after Hurricane Irma, there's a lot of items that we thought were covered that because we didn't do an audit, they were general blanket items, and so, it's better to have an item enumerated in our policy versus it being a blanket item because you get a higher rate of return when it's time to pay out those items. So, we did that this year.
Are the trees on A1A covered?
They're not. And we've tried to find a special, we've, we've tried now for five years to find a special underwriter that covered modules, and they're still not covered. And that's a $2.8 million uninsured asset of the town.
So, if that hurricane had hit, we'd be out with modules.
35,000...
Stable palms there.
$35,000, 35, $35,000 an increase to our landscaping. As you know, we renewed our landscape budget. The increase was about less than 5%, $35,000. We also adjusted all of our utilities on a three-year basis for the first time in about two years. And we looked at all of our commodities for the last, for the, over a three-year basis. We're providing for three police cars, which we authorized this past year. Remember, you said, buy it and we'll pay for it next year? We have that. We have three non-police cars, the ATCs and stuff like that, and then the replacement of our boat engines. Now, those are our general guiding principles. Couple of things that we need to look at in terms of our core principles for the coming year, you know, safety and security is always our utmost importance, things that we do. Transparency and communication with our residents. Embrace the highest level standards of fiscal stability, which is what you're seeing us painting on our debt, trying to increase our, take care of our liabilities. Engaging our community in recreational programming is driving for a more effective and efficient government. Those are our goals for the year. Let me also just talk about what happens, because I know that a lot of times, you look at the budget and you say, Alex, all you did is cut and paste. Well, that's not what we did. So, throughout the course of the summer, Maria and I go through every single line item. Here's the backup for it. We go through every single bill, every single expenditure, every single vendor, and we audit, we true up where we spent our money. Here's what we, how we're unique to other communities. We really don't change a lot in terms of what we, how we practice and how we spend our money. And so, all we want to do is make sure that we true up if there are any outliers in the budget. So, we saw that Marine Patrol fuel went up, or sorry, going down this year, but it didn't go down by a whole lot. So, we like to keep the cushions that we have. In our budget, every department does have what we call cushion or, or money set aside for unforeseen or one-time unique projects. Again, following our purchasing requirements, the department directors will come to me and say, Mr. Manager, I'd like to put in, look, Mr. McCoy just did it. Mr. McCoy came to me about two months ago and said, Mr. Manager, we need a new drainage field near the tennis courts. So, I'd like to put in about $5,000 of a drainage field so that our tennis courts don't flood. And so, rather than have to go to the council to get a budget amendment to move money to the department budget, because we have inflated lines in the budget, I authorized Mr. McCoy to go in and put in the $5,000 drainage field near our tennis courts where the pickleball court's going to go. So, that is a, a project that wasn't enumerated in last year's budget, but it makes sense to do because we see flooding on our tennis courts, and you get the phone calls when people have flooding. Or when Ms. Kamal says, we have an employee who's been out for seven months and I need to bring in a temp employee. And so I need money to bring in a temp employee. And so rather than come to the council and say, we need money for a temp employee because one of our employees is out, we have monies within our line items that I'm allowed to move up and down, anything less, anything up to $25,000 with the mayor's consent. And typically on Mondays, we meet and we go over what our goals are for the week. And so we have that flexibility. So keep that in mind as we go through the line through the budget. We do not have a line item budget. So what we're going to talk about this evening is numbers in our personnel costs and numbers in our department, in our expenditures. And if you have an individual question about a line item, I'll answer that, but I'm not going to go through every single line because we'll be here all night. So any questions in terms of the 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 basis of our budget or how we put our scope together? One last observation for our residents or for our council. Excuse me. When you look at our budget, it's extremely important that you not just emphasize your efforts and your concentration on the numbers. Your budget is also your business plan. Okay, so when you look at your budget, instead of just looking at the numbers, you need to know what the initiatives and the goals are for the year. Your initiatives and goals drive where your numbers are. Now, some of our council members would rather see us enumerate in the budget how each initiative, what the costs are going to be. In government, we don't do that because in government, we get permission for the initiatives, then we go out and procure the services. And so we have to have the allocation there. Everything within our spending authority, so long as it's within the spending authority, anything, let me remind the council. Any spending above 25,000, we have to come to you for the authority to spend that money. So it's not that we're just going to, oh, go spend $40,000 on boat engines. So even though you allocated $40,000 for boat engines, I still need to come back to you and say, we found the vendor, this is how we procured it, we need your approval to spend it, and you still have to do that. Anything less than $25,000, so long as Mayor Singer signs off and we're allowed to move move forward. That allows our day to day operations to move without us having to take five months to get any initiatives completed. So with that said, let's go to the first department.
Yep. Just real quickly on the variance expenses and things like that. Is there glaring things that that come out to you that you want to point out to us or give us a quick explanation on?
No, look, and I think that Councilman Mendel probably has the best grasp in terms of in terms of where this issue is. So yes, in our variance report, you'll see from year to year that some of our departments have department savings of about 20,000, 15,000 that when it's all added up, you know, that 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 adds up to your 2.240,000 dollars you saved last year, right? And so the question is, should we reduce those budgets so that we don't have those those inflated numbers in the department? And I would argue that you want us to have that flexibility within the department budget so that we can meet those unforeseen or those projects that make sense when they when they arise, rather than wait for a council meeting to get your approval to allocate the money and then allocate the project. So could we could we change the way we fund our departments so that we have a a more true up number? I would argue no, because every year in October, we bring to you what our actuals are, and if there's any department that goes over and we need to make budget transfers, you require of me and of the administration that we justify to you why any one department went over. And so we've only had to do this in my 13 years as manager, we've only had to do it three times. Where we overspent our budget with your permission, you authorize us to overspend the budget throughout the year, and then we cleaned it up in October. So so I would argue that if you decided to take that money away or not overfund the department budgets, maybe your residents would say, give us a millage rate reduction. And our argument to not giving a millage rate reduction is we need to increase the amount of money that we have available in our fund balance because our fund balance is currently sitting at a very low $900,000 figure. We need 1.2 of it for your new civic center. And so this is how we grow revenues without asking our residents for a millage rate increase. And it's been successful so far for 13 years. And so I would say that although it may not be as as clean as some would like it, it's actually have worked for us. And that's why we've been able to add close to $8 million in new projects over 13 years to our residents without asking them to rate their.
Could I just say a couple of quickies?
Sure.
If that's possible, on page one of the variance report, the accounting and auditing, is that because we had an audit year of 16,000?
When you're saying page one, which page one?
Oh, well, no, I shouldn't say page one. It says page one. They all say page one.
So I would ask that you wait until we get to the department of question. So each each page has a department category on top and I'll tell you what department it is.
That's why we can when you go through.
So when we get to that department, I can answer it by department.
Yeah, this goes with the budget.
I think you're asking for number four. Which is the finance budget.
So we get the finance budget, we'll do that.
Okay.
But every year is an audit year.
Yeah, I was just wondering why those 16,000.
We'll get to that, yeah, but ask that.
Okay, fine.
Go on, Alex.
All right, so starting with the legislative budget.
We're into the book now.
We're into your slide presentation and your book. Yep. So the first one is your legislative budget, which is under tab 511 or starting on page 74. Last year's personnel budget, last year personnel, we had 87,000. This year we have it at 89,000. That increase is specifically because of the legislative insurance obligations. Last year's operating was 50,200. This year we're recommending to keep it at 50,200. Last year, this department overspent by $45,000. Now, that $45,000 that you overspent last year was because you authorized projects to be to be initiated on your behalf. And so we did not fund at the beginning of the year, those projects that you wanted done throughout the year. And so at the end of the year last year, we did an audit cleanup to transfer in $50,000 from other departments that had money available to it. They cleaned that up. Currently, currently, this department is has about a $1,000 left before we go over budget for the year. And we still have three weeks left before that occurs.
Quick example of one of those items we wanted under the 45.
$5,000 for the ADL luncheon.
Okay, next.
Any questions on the legislative budget? Moving on to the, oh, by the way, your objectives, and I'm not going to read them all because we'll be here all night. The objectives are always going to be on the right hand side. And the objectives is what supports the funding. Moving on to the executive budget, budget budget starts on page.
82.
Page 82, and it's the next set of it's the next set of documents under your your item.
Anyway, for those of you who haven't seen this book, you gotta take a look at it because it's.
It's available online.
It's a piece of art. It's it's just amazing.
And I apologize for this for the screen being wrong, but if you look at your printed version, you can see it a little bit easier. We'll get that fixed for next year. For last year, this department had a personnel cost of $427,000. This year, we're reducing it to 396. Two things are happening this year. One, we're moving the receptionists out of the town's manager's budget and we're going to put it into the resident services budget. Our receptionist deals more with residents than they do with the manager. So Mr. Glidden will now be overseeing the receptionist and giving given that employee task and objectives for the year. There are also two vacancies in my department. I have an executive assistant that I have not filled. Ms. Perez has has been serving as both the town clerk and my executive assistant. I have not filled that position. And so we do have two vacant positions in my budget. I do plan to fill one of the two positions this year. Last year's operating budget was 57,900.
What position do you plan on filling?
The support services position.
Which is what?
A support services position to help help my department. We have two vacancies in my department.
We've always had two vacancies.
Yes, but for instance, we just hired our support services person who started last week.
That's under.
That's under my that's under my department.
I thought we were moving that to code enforcement.
No, no, no.
Okay.
You're moved to police.
What's that?
So last year.
Moving to police.
So so last so last year.
At that point, so what changed?
We have more goals and objectives this coming year. There's a lot more moving parts. You're asking me to manage a 5.2 million dollar capital project, which means that I need to focus my efforts on that project and probably less on answering cat questions and iguanas.
So this was in anticipation.
So.
The new civic center.
Correct. So we so again, and we've been knowing this for about three years because, you know, three years ago, we talked about giving back a position. It's hard to ask for a position once you give it away. And so as you as you can see, last year, this department had a $28,000 savings and we're currently at about $27,000. We still have one payroll left, so let's keep that in mind. We still have one payroll left, so that 27,000 will probably be a lot less than that. Probably be close to $12,000. But last year, we had 28,000 in savings. This year, we're about 27,000. Any questions about the executive budget?
New position that you're going to add? You had the two?
It's not new. There are two vacancies and we're going to fill one.
Okay, so you're going to fill the one we'll vet forego the need of having an owner's rep?
No. And we we still haven't decided, Mayor Singer and I have not decided how the organizational structure for the CIP is going to be, but I anticipated I anticipate myself serving as that day to day projects manager with our consultant who's been the architect who put the design criteria together to be our our everyday, making sure that the objectives and the design criterias are being met. And we may hire an owner's rep to come in. Let me remind everyone that when we structured the civic center for next year, we're doing it as a design build. So there are no cost overruns, any change orders that we would be on the hook for. We guarantee a maximum price. That's all we're going to pay. And we're going to have bulldogs checking that everything that we they told us we were going to get for that number is going to be achieved. That's will be myself and Ms. I don't know how to pronounce her last name, but Lisette, the other Lisette, right? So we'll be making sure that everything that we stipulated in design criteria is met. But you don't need an owner's rep. Owner's reps typically look for savings. We don't care if they're saving because at the end of the day, those savings aren't passed on to us.
Okay.
But we had one for the check we call.
Because our CIP project was not a design build.
Design and build itself.
So if I put in, so so if I put in 15, 1500 more rebars that weren't needed, we were on the hook for that. If they want to put in more rebar, we're not on the hook for that. But if they want to put in less rebar, Lisette and myself will catch that and say, hey, you promised us 38 rebars, you gave us 36. We want the other two to put that be put in.
Okay.
So on a design build project with a GMP, it's a lot different than a than a non design build. Steve, if I'm saying anything incorrectly, please feel free to speak up.
No, that's correct.
Because this is a new notion for us. We're not accustomed to this. And so, yes, we have been accustomed to owner's rep. And if we would need one, we would add one, but because of the way that we're asking you to approve this project, we won't need it. And I think that we have enough, between the mayor and I, I think we feel comfortable enough right now. If we need to bring someone else on board, we will. And there's money in my budget and there's money in your CIP budget to do that. There's about $60,000 available in the CIP budget if we need to bring in another consultant to help us with that. Any questions about the executive budget?
Yeah, as far as the variance goes, just can you just talk about very quickly, very briefly, just the last item? What's the bulk of that made up of?
What last item?
On the variance for the executive.
What's the number?
00151264.
What's the description?
Machinery machinery and equipments. $5,000 budget, 45,000 actual spend.
Maria, we'll print that for you. We'll get you we'll get you the detail for that. Maria, go ahead and go print that. Yeah, for any for any of those, we'll do as you have questions, we'll print you the details so you can see exactly how it was. It was okay, we'll move on while the clerk while the. All right, so moving on to the town clerk's office. Last year, we had 176, sorry. Last year, we had 176,000 in personnel. This year's 190,000. It's just because of the the cola and the insurance. Operating from 40,000 to 35,000. And yes, Mayor Singer asked this question throughout the summer. Even though we do not have election, we still have election related expenditures. That's why there's still money in the election line. Okay? So we have to start getting our our budget, our books ready. We have to get our material ready. We have to start advertising. We have to pay the county for their services. The counties have to do their testing. They have to get the machinery ready. So there are expenses related to elections, even though it's not an election year. Last year, this department had an $8,000 overrun. That's because we did have an election. Our election cost came in higher than anticipated. The county has charged more money and they wanted more poll workers. So we overspent this budget by $8,100. So far this year, we're about 8,000 in 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 savings. There's still one payroll left. There's probably going to be about $300 in savings in this year's budget. Any questions about the town clerk budget?
No, you know, I forgot to ask very quickly. I know when you were in the executive.
You need to go back?
Yeah, just very, you're going to do a study, sustainability study?
Yes.
Can you just explain what that is and what's the timeline for that?
Excellent. So just like last year, just like last year, Councilman Lust can ask that we do an A1A corridor study, which we're going to present to you at next Thursday's meeting, which is why we're asking you to come in early. The mayor and I have been really taking to heart the issues of sustainability and sea level rise and climate change. We do not believe that sustainability is unique to just weather and elements. We need to look at whether our fiscal house is in order, what our growth plans are, how we're going to be able to sustain local government. How do we change the way we operate, knowing that our knowing that our tax basis is about to clunk out? So our goal is over the course of the next 12 months is as we go on with the civic center to bring in experts in the field of sustainability, weather related, and experts in the field of general government, non weather related, and look at our fiscal house and look at our environment and put together a plan. So the mayor and I had the pleasure of meeting this summer with the sustainability program from Miami Dade County. As you know, the Rockefeller Group gave Miami Dade $500 million for sustainability. It's being managed by the Miami Dade Foundation. So they have staff in that in that with that staff, they've identified projects for all 34 municipalities in Dade County. So in Golden Beach, they've identified six non non weathered projects that they would like us to tackle. So we're going to be working with those consultants and those individuals to see if we can help achieve the county sustainability and resiliency program. So that's how we're going to initiate.
You said non weather. What is that?
Yeah, so issues like education, healthcare. Did you know that in Golden Beach, we have a hepatitis outbreak? And so those type of health related issues and working with, yes, we do. We actually have had these conversations with the Miami Dade County. And so how do you look at health related issues, access to healthcare, access to education, access to can we sustain insurance for Golden Beach if we don't meet sea level rise requirements? Will people underwrite insurance policies in Golden Beach? And what are we doing as local government to make sure that we continue to have underwriters that are willing and able to provide insurance? Keybuskane is tackling this issue and Steve can probably speak about it better than I can. So we're going to look at our neighboring communities and see what they're doing for these type of related issues. But for us, it's not just environment, it's all the other things, healthcare, education. Just next week, the clerk has already scheduled a meeting for us to meet with the CEO and CFO of North Shore Hospital. They want to do outreach in our community. So looking at those non weather related, sustainable and resiliency programs, this is.
And we're also looking at everything that Dade County, we met last week with some potential mayor candidates. We asked them, same thing, what are they doing for the county and what we need to do? So we are on top of it.
Sounds like a great program. Is there funding that we could, grants that we could definitely, because these are.
So once once we identify what our projects are going to be and what our goals and objectives, then we'll identify whether or not we need to secure them. But I we feel and the mayor and I feel that this is the right year to start looking at that, that we shouldn't put our our heads in a hole and just ignore it because it is something that we need to start addressing and start getting ready for. Moving on from, I did the town clerk already, moving on to finance. So the finance department starts on page.
106.
Last year's salaries was 176. Sorry, last year's salaries was 234,886. This year's 249. Again, those were the increases. 72,000 in last year's expenses. We're asking for 82 this year. And the reason we're asking for 82, we have a personnel issue in this department that we're working with the legal department to see if we can resolve, but we have had to bring in some outside temp help to help us while we address those issues. Last year, the department overs.
Which departments have?
Finance.
Last year, the department overspent by. Last year, the department's overspent by $21,000, 1,000% related to the issues that we have with the personnel that's not been coming to work. And this year, we're already at $13,000 over the budget because of those additional costs that we're having to incur by bringing in a third party organization to help us with our accounting needs. Because we do have a personnel issue in this department that we're trying to address. Any questions as it relates to finance? And just so you know, yes, we do have an audit every year that you're approved typically at your April meeting, and we have not had a single negative comment on our on our finances in the last 10 years. We did have three, the first three years, and those were immediately addressed. Moving on to legal, our legal department, I love our town attorney. He does not spend money. I gotta tell you, Steve has done a phenomenal job. Thank you, Steve.
How do you spend money?
I think I think they're going to boot him out of his firm because of it, but we did have some.
They already booted me.
I want you I want you to know this.
I'm just taking care of you guys.
I did want you to know this. We did have some legal expenditures last year not attributed to our general government operations. And I don't think that we should hold our legal team here responsible for that. So we do have an active, we do have an active lawsuit that has cost us more than what we had hoped it would cost us. I can't get into the details of that. I'm going to brief you each individually because we had had some progress over the last couple of weeks. And we'll go through that. Last year, we asked, we had 234,000. We're asking for 249. Sorry, I'm the wrong, I keep on going. 249, we're dropping it by $40,000. We think that our outside legal counsel is going to go away next year. Last year, we overspent, last year, we overspent the department by 50,000. This year, we're about $60,000 in in the positive as it relates to this department. And again, kudos to Steve. Now, I will say this. Steve and I, Steve and I have been talking about this for years and I think it's finally time. And although we did lose Kathy Mahaffey, who was excellent for us, we will task Steve in next year's budget to do two things. One, do a, we have not had a full code ordinance review since 2009, when I first got hired, two years after I got hired. It's time for us to do a top to bottom review of all of our code. We budgeted it for that next year. So we're going to ask legal to go through every we typically spend most of our efforts on the building department, right, and zoning. I want Steve to go from charter to Z. Because don't forget, first is charters, then this is code of ordinance, and do a top to down review to get our code of ordinance in proper order and to clean clean up any of the mess that we had. Kathy Mahaffey was working with us to do that last year. We also want to start putting into our code areas that we are silent. For instance, and he's working on this as we speak. We're about to undertake a great big civic center project as part of our civic center master plan. However, your code only deals with zoning related matters for single family residential units. We don't have a zoning code as it relates from municipal government or non municipal areas. So Steve's team is actually working as we speak to bring to you a zoning ordinance as it relates to our civic center. So that when we build our civic center, no one can say, hey, you're violating your own zoning rules because we don't have zoning for the civic center. So that's just one example of what the attorneys are going to be tasked with next year. And again, kudos to Steve for helping us reduce our costs. He's allowed my staff and I to just write most of our resolutions. We play attorneys, but he makes sure that we keep we stay within the line. Any questions as it relates to legal or what we're tasking them with with next year? Okay, so moving on to our general government. Tab 519. I'd like to just spend two seconds on 519 real quick. Tab five nineteen, I'd like to just spend two seconds on five nineteen real quick, um, as it relates to last year, or this current year.
General Government, one sixteen?
One nineteen, page uh, one seven, one sixteen.
One sixteen.
So, in this year's budget, in this year's budget, in today's budget, you have four hundred thousand dollars pledged to come out of your fund balance. To pay for projects out of five nineteen. I'm pleased to announce that we will not need to do that, we will not be touching our fund balance. Because our revenues in the building department have been so healthy, and, and our revenues in our other non-building department areas have been so healthy. We do not have the need to tap your general fund balance to meet our budget obligations. Um, things that we're also not doing, you're not seeing a lot of inflated numbers in terms of capital projects, because we're gonna allocate the capital projects once you approve them later in the year. So last year, um, it was one point four million, this year's one point two million, we did grow our contingency by fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we wanted to make sure that we start growing our contingency lot item, as we see, knock on wood. We had the potential of three storms hitting us this year, and there's another one out there in the, in the Atlantic. So I think that it's time for us to start growing our contingency to what our true numbers were, we know that Irma cost us close to nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, of which uh, five hundred thousand was gonna, no, sorry, cost us seven hundred thousand dollars, of which five hundred thousand is being reimbursed to us by FEMA. We've already received two hundred thousand and three hundred have already been approved in the pipeline. But we wanna grow that contingency closer to a four hundred thousand dollar number, and we're gonna see that over the course of the next few years, so that we are ready for storm-related expenses.
I think we're only due on FEMA a hundred thousand left, right?
No, we, 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 we chewed up the numbers, I could share that with you, Maria, where is it?
That's fine, Alex, that's fine.
Yeah, but they've all, our projects have been approved.
Right.
They're just not delivered yet, so.
I think implied but not stated is that the hurricane cost us the town out of pocket, two hundred thousand. I mean, that was a major hit.
It was, and let's talk about that real quick, because I know it's come up with, by, by three different council members. It could've cost us zero. What, what do you mean by that, Alex? We could've waited the three and four weeks that FEMA requires to bring in our contracted vendors to come and clean our streets. And live with debris along the side of the road for those additional month, month and a half, like other communities in South Florida. We feel that that's not the level of service that our residents expect of us. And the reason they pay the property taxes that they pay is so that when we do need to spend money to get our community back in a beautiful functioning order we do so quickly. We also didn't need to spend close to twenty thousand dollars on providing meals for our residents. I just do not believe that in a community like Golden Beach, our residents are gonna be, be eating pork and beans out of the can. And so by us bringing in food trucks to feed our residents at night, that was a, that was part of our elevated service that our residents have come to expect of Golden Beach. We could cut those levels of services out, but I think that our residents will have, will revolt on us. And so Councilman Einstein, or excuse me, Vice, yes, Councilman Einstein, you're correct, that two hundred thousand dollars we can't recoup. But the goodwill and gesture that we gained by our community saying, wow, we were able to clean up in such an effective manner. I think that we need to prepare ourselves on a storm-by-storm basis to have those type of losses. And I think that our residents expect us to deliver that level of service, we could've had zero. But then I think that our residents were, found that we were not providing them the level of service that they've become accustomed to. And that is a policy decision that you as a council need to decide. We feel as an administration that, yes, it is a big chunk of money, but we set it aside in our budgets so that our residents know that when they need us to be clean and organized and, and. Protect their homes, and provide them with, with comfort after a storm, we do so. Look, we did things that no other community did, we put residents up in hotels when their, when their power didn't come on. No other community would ever do that, we did, because when you live in Golden Beach and you pay a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in your property taxes. And everyone else's light comes on and yours doesn't, you wanna know that the government's doing something for you because of the taxes that you pay. Do we need to do that? Maybe not, but we have built a community, and we have sold a community through all of the advertising that we do, uh, on, at any given year. To maintain our property values, that that's the level of service that you expect of Golden Beach's government.
So that two thirty-five contingencies, that's for, in case there is a hurricane, that's what we have that for.
How much should we spend on hotel bills?
It was like nothing, uh, I think eight hundred dollars.
On what?
A thousand dollars.
On what?
It was two residents.
Minuscule.
Oh.
But.
That's the only thing that sounded outlandish to me, but everything else I agree with.
It, it sounds outlandish to you, right, because you have power on, but when your neighbor didn't have power, but everyone else did, how fair was it to them?
You're right, you're right, you're right.
They, they, they went for an extra two weeks without power.
And so how fair is that to your neighbor?
I forgot, I forgot there was a few people that didn't have power.
But in general.
Now that we put everyone up in hotels, it's after we went live.
Right, right, okay.
And we still had two or three homes that didn't have power.
After a week of not.
It was, it was not fair to them.
But in regards to the hurricane, the food trucks, the cleanup debris, in general, the uh, Golden Beach residents were really appreciative of it.
Yeah, and a, again, it, we have built, we have built a level of expected service through the years that is white glove. That we tailor to the needs of our community, and that's why we maintain our property values where they are. If we were to start giving up, being, I think it would be petty-wise, pound foolish.
Alex.
Yes, sir.
Do the fact that hurricanes are so late in our budget year, that two thirty-five's not touched, correct? Last year we didn't touch that, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
How much did the hurricane prep last month cost?
Uh, Maria and I had that number, it was like close to fourteen thousand dollars. And buying extra sandbags and extra water, we took on, uh, we did have staff clearing debris, so we had to pay some double time for some of our staff. But less than twenty, all in, we can give you that true-up number, Maria was actually asking.
That's fine, I was just curious.
Okay, and that.
The, the preparation taking down the coconuts, I mean, five day that week before was really heads up, whoever pushed that. And then maintenance.
Charge a coconut.
The maintenance crew did a tremendous job.
And I could tell you this, and I could tell you this, and I, and I like to publicly acknowledge this, um, as everyone knows, I was out of town on vacation. Um, and our town clerk, our police chief, and our maintenance department director, uh, Ken and Kirk, the entire team, even Michael Glidden and Linda Epperson, and even. The Lieutenant Giovanni Diaz did a stellar job, I mean, I, I could've stayed away, which I wouldn't have stayed away, and it would've been fine. By the time I got here that Friday, everything was in perfect order, the mayor and I were able to fly in on Friday, we both felt very comfortable where we were on Saturday. Councilman Mendel, Councilman Einstein both came in and made sure that things were going well, what, in my absence. I cannot have been prouder of the team that we have in place, um, I could, I could, I could tell you that kudos to them, my hats off to them. And I thanked them from the bottom of my heart, because they really did a stellar job while they were, while we were gone. We now know that we can go on vacation again, no, no more vacations in August if the mayor has made it clear, but thank you to the staff, thank you all of you.
Thank God for the coconut guy.
I agree to a hundred percent, to be honest, I don't think we need you anymore.
Yeah. If we can just wait until November.
Save a lot of money.
If we could just wait until the November eleventh, when I hit my second year on my pension, I'm good to go. So.
We can make that happen right before, day before.
I think I have enough, I think I have enough sick and vacation time accumulated to get me to that November eleventh date. But yes.
Keep going.
Alright, so any questions about five nineteen? And I know that we're taking a little bit longer than the mayors are accustomed to on this, but I, I wanna make sure we make everyone feel comfortable. On the, on law enforcement, which is, which is our biggest department.
Page one twenty-six.
And for all those consultants in the audience, I know that you're still bullied by Bill of ours, so you're good to go. Okay, on the police department, a couple of things that we're doing new this year. One, we're moving code enforcement back to police, not because we want it to be a bunch of police officers hitting you over the head. It's because the administrative requirements for code, where we fall short, for no lack, for no responsibility. For no blame to Linda or her team, we don't have the administrative backing up of the department to follow up with the proper paperwork that's needed. So that we can support our code violations when we take them to magistrate. In year, in the last ten years, we have tried to settle code violations through the non-magistrate process. Most of the new code violations that we're seeing require us to go through the process of special magistrate. And so because the police department just finishes accreditation, we have a vacant, a position that's gonna be available to help with code. We're moving code enforcement out of the building department, and we're adding code compliance, the goal is that we get you to comply before we go to enforcement. Under the building department, Lieutenant Diaz will be overseeing that division. Officer Diaz, the code enforcement officer, will be moving over to the police department, and so police is now taking over the department of code compliance. With the exception of. Important, with the exception of seawall-related issues. S, uh, NPD, NPDES-related issues, there were three, I can't remember the third. But Linda and the building department will still oversee those issues, so seawall-related, water on your property. That will still stay a function of the building department, because our goal is to get seawalls constructed and caps to be put in. So Linda's team will still oversee that, grass cutting, painting, uh, trees that are dead, that will now fall under the code compliance division of the police department. So let's set that um, for the department. Um, last year, the department had two hundred and.
Two million.
Two million five hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars in personnel costs. This year is two million six hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and forty-nine. And in, and expenditures last year is five hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred, this year is five hundred and ninety thousand two hundred. Last year this department went over budgeted by ninety-four thousand dollars, why did it go over by ninety-four thousand dollars? The majority of, is strictly related to your equipment expenses that you're authorized throughout the year, and then we had to do a budget transfer to clean it up. We're currently over by a hundred and three thousand dollars in this year, and again, that goes to the police vehicle purchases that you've authorized. So it's not that the police chief is going spending crazy, these are overtures because you have authorized those expenditures. But that's what we're, that's what we're recommending for this year.
Yeah, so, uh, just two quick things on that, I see that you're recommending uh, another K, a canine. It says here, the department will recommend hiring a full-time certified canine control officer.
Where, where do you see that?
Uh, new initiatives.
Hey, GB for that.
So, so, okay, so, yes and no, so remember, we've always had two canines, but Officer Villa no longer has his dog. Because the dog had to be retired, so we're looking to fill that position, so it's not a third dog, it's just to fill the second dog.
Yeah, that's what I thought, and then uh, the last thing, so the, on the variance, the overtime. Um, was there a staff issue, or that was mostly due to the hurricane, or?
Combination of two, combination of two things, um, storm-related, and don't forget, we also had the GPS issues this summer. Where we had to bring in a lot of officers to, to help patrol at night, because GPSs were disappearing off our police boats. And so we did have, we did, and we also have the standing, what do you call it?
The uh, directive patrol.
Directive patrol, so Chief Ravello has a standing directive patrol that brings in extra officers to provide additional security at night. And that program has knocked on away, that's why we have seen very little, if any, crime, with the exception of the GPSs that we're missing this year. Any questions on police, moving right? Yes.
Uh, community service aides.
Yes, so your community service aides are what you guys used to call the security guards in the guardhouse.
Correct.
So your CSA's are now the officers that are in the guardhouse, and they also do patrol in the golf cart on Thursday, Fridays, and Saturday evenings.
So they come under public safety.
That's correct.
And um. I don't know which, there was one of the guys in the golf carts, he was always around, always talking, stopping, where, is he still working here?
Officer Garfius, yes.
Is that who that was?
He's my most talkative officer out there, he's a great guy though, you can't understand a word he says, but he's excellent.
He's always interested, you know, he's always like.
Am I mischaracterizing?
He's always out there.
What'd you say? Go, go on.
I'm ready to move on to the building department, the council's.
So anyway, as the biggest department, and this is all controlled by contract, union contract, I mean, there's nothing we can.
Excellent observation.
Shave here and say, oh, we got, if, if you're gonna shave from something, you got two million.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna shave from, is you could shave from the five hundred thousand dollar number, but you can't shave from the two point six million dollar number.
Right, which is police cars, that is, the boats, the replacement and.
And you bring up a very interesting and spectacular point, we are entering contract negotiations next year, wonderful.
Isn't that just hot?
No.
It happens three years.
It happens every three years, and we have to have it ready before the contract ends. I'll remind the council that when I was hired, the contract had not been ratified in six years, so I had to clean up a six-year mess, and we will never do that. To any of our community moving forward, so we do, we will entertain contract negotiations this coming year. Moving on to the building department.
Uh, repairs and maintenance, uh, we went over by quite a bit, I'm assuming, in vehicles.
It's the old fleet, it's the old fleet, correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Building department. Building department, um, last year was three hundred and fifty-two thousand um. Two thirty-three, this year's three, three ten, why did it go down? Because we moved the code enforcement officer out of it. And last year is two hundred and eighty thousand, and this year's two hundred and eighty-seven. Last year the department went over by twenty-eight thousand dollars, and this is one department that I really can't control, let me tell you why. Our inspectors are paid on a percentage of permit fees, and so it fluctuates, and Linda has done a phenomenal job in controlling the cost. But when we have overruns, like last year was twenty-eight thousand, it's because of that, but this year, it has an eighty-one thousand dollar savings so far. So that's because we didn't have as many um, projects that needed um, our inspectors, and don't forget, we also did two things. Our building official is no longer our zoning reviewer, and our building official is no longer our planner. Um, those responsibilities have been delegated to other areas, and we also have now the landscape architect that reviews. So, in this budget, Linda will hire a new person to assist her. Um, not that we'd like to see Linda go anytime, but for the next ten years, but Linda is getting close to her retirement era. And we need to start anticipating that from five years from now, and learning what Linda has in her head is very cumbersome, and so we need to start mentoring someone. To get us ready for that, Ms. Epperson has asked that we bring in someone, she's being very responsible, she has asked that we bring in someone to help her memorialize what we do. So that when she leaves, there's a book that shows us what we do, and I think that we, kudos to Linda for being so fortuitous and saying that that's what she wants to do. And so I think it's great that she says, look, we wanna be responsible, start capturing what we do in this department. The other thing that she's asked us to do is to bring in a third-party consultant to see what we can do better in the department. So there's two groups, Giordano, Giordano whatever is one, and the other one is uh, I can't remember them, but Steve knows the names better than I do. But we wanna bring in a, a third-party consultant to look to see how we can streamline our process, memorialize our process. Right now we're looking at about ten thousand dollars to set aside for that, to look at that. Um, so it's time for us to start creating manuals, books, and policies, and so, thank you Linda for thinking about that and for bringing that as a new initiative. And we look forward to having that this year, any questions about the building department? If not, we'll move on to the built, public works department. Our public works department. Last year was eight hundred and sixty-one thousand in personnel costs, this year is nine hundred and six thousand, operating was three hundred and fifty-nine, this year is three sixty-nine. Um, if you look at, if you look at your budget and expenditures, last year we went over by. Sorry, last year we had an operating savings of thirty-two thousand dollars, that's because two employees retired mid-stream. And so we didn't fill those positions right away, that's why you had the savings, and this year we're fifty-six thousand dollars over. Um, and that, because we have now uh, filled the positions, and in addition to that, we have um. So two things, we had, we had two positions that retired last year, that's where you saw the savings, and this year we staffed those two positions. And our retirement contribution for the department this year went over by um. Went over because we had more full-time employees brought on than we had last year. So in the prior year, we were operating the department with more part-timers and less full-timers, this year we have more full-timers and not as many part-timers. And so that's why that department has gone over, we also have in this department something new that we're exploring, and we're experimenting as part of our future programming. There are two contracted employees that work out of the public works department. If, by contracted employees, we don't longer have all the benefits obligations that are required. So we do have two part-time contracted employees that come in and provide services to our public works department. And that's a pilot project that we're starting to see if it's beneficial to us, and we're trying to see if the IRS guidelines allow us to do it, so we're kinda exploring. The possibility of one day outsourcing public works.
So, so. Do what parts of that do you not have to fund for them?
So all we, so we pay them a, we pay them a flat.
Like an independent contractor?
A flat daily fee, correct.
They're not full-time though, right?
No, they're not full-time.
So yeah, so the IRS doesn't have a problem with that, it's a hard time in.
Remember, only if we treat them like full-time employees and they're not.
Require them to when to come in and when to leave.
Independent contractor.
Fully independent contractor.
Correct.
So we don't save, we save on the social security.
Pension, pension, health insurance, da, 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 da.
Uh, yeah, so, when I look at this, is there? Eleven peo, people employed?
So currently, there, there's eight full-time and three part-time in the public works department.
That includes the custodian.
That includes the custodian, that's correct.
What was it like five years ago, how many people?
Thirteen.
There's more.
Full-time. Thirteen, thirteen full-time, when I got hired. When I got hired, it was fourteen full-time. And we're now doing it with eight and three part-timers. And we'll probably get down to about six. But we need at a minimum eight to meet our sanitation obligation.
Right. I I agree.
And the white level glove service that we provide, we clean your garbage cans three times a, twice or three times a, three times a year, we go into your yard, we take your garbage cans out, we clean it for you with sanitation, uh sanitizer, excuse me, we odorize them, we get, we get actually odorizing chemicals.
Don't forget the coconuts.
Don't forget the coconuts. Uh, and then, you know, cleaning our storm drains and cleaning our, and picking up our parks. So we are the only community that I know of in Florida, and I'll ask at the ICMA conference in October, we actually clean your garbage cans. Think about that. Which other city actually gets your garbage cans and cleans it for you? Moving on, the mayor's saying, any questions about public works? And again, kudos to Cameron Kirk and Numbetto in that department. Rosen Streets, Rosen Streets is overseen by Mr. Jones. And that's where also you see the crazy guy, Numbetto, who does our mailboxes and our general fixing. Um, our Rosen Streets budget. And also, uh, our Rosen Street budget last year was a hundred and three, this year a hundred and nine. Last year's operating was five twenty-three, this year is five forty-five. If you look at the Rosen Street expenditures. Last year went over by forty-six thousand dollars, most of that was curb and gutter work that we did. This year, we're at about sixty-two thousand dollar savings. Don't forget that sixty-two thousand dollars is gone because you spend it in your millionaire resurfacing project that started tonight on North, or started this morning at North Island. So this budget will go over because your Rosen Streets covers your millionaire resurfacing project. Last year, we're over by forty-six thousand because that's curb and gutter work that we did.
Ju- just out of curiosity, what's going on on Golden Beach Drive right now?
So there's a bunch of work being done. As part of your millionaire resurfacing projects, we're looking at fixing all the concrete, concrete bands that were broken. We're milling and resurfacing the Golden Beach Drive, and we're still coating all of the islands. So you're gonna see activity for the next six weeks.
Milling and resurfacing all of Golden Beach Drive or?
All of Golden Beach Drive.
Really?
One hundred percent. You authorized that two minutes ago.
No, I know, I know, I just didn't remember.
Recreation budget.
And there is a next budget, there's eighty, eighty thousand in uh re- repairing many streets, considering what we're doing now, are we expecting?
Yes, yes, because we, remember, as it relates to curb and gutter work. We haven't, we haven't done big-time spending on curb and gutter, and we probably have, what, can I have a scan? Probably have one thousand linear feet of curb and gutter work that needs to replace. At least a thousand linear feet of curb and gutter that needs to replace. And one of the items that we're asking you to do tonight is increase your curb and gutter fee. Because right now, we're not making enough money on our curb and gutter fee to recoup our costs. So developers in the audience, yes, we're asking for a fee increase tonight. Rosen Streets, any questions? Moving on, because it's getting late. And I talk too much. Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Recreation Department, last year is two hundred and ninety-three thousand, this year is three hundred and twelve. Last year's expenditure was four hundred and thirteen thousand, this year is four hundred and fourteen. Parks and Recreation is where you have all of your fun activities at the beach, your beach attendance, your recreational lifeguards and programming. A lot of your events come out of this department. Also, your landscaping budget comes out of this department for all of your parks and all your facilities.
So beach dependence center, police, so.
Sorry, lifeguards or?
Lifeguards under police.
They're split, they're bu- they're budgeted into, the police department oversees the department, they're funded in the recreation department. So police department oversees our, our lifeguards and beach attendants, it's part of their oversight, but their money comes out of this department.
Oh, so they're enlisted under the police?
Cause they oversee it. But the money comes out of this department.
You mean they supervise it?
They oversee the entire uh lifeguard, beach attendant responsibilities, as well as the CSA's and now code enforcement. Go police, good job, Chief Fabello. Phew, didn't leave. Last year, we saved nineteen thousand dollars. Right now, we're on track to save fifty thousand dollars on this budget. And that's because we didn't do as much beach programming or beach maintenance. Now, Councilman Bern- Vice Mayor Bernstein did ask me this uh yesterday for us to look at setting aside some money in next year's budget for some improvements to some of the um furniture that we have at the beach. I assured him that within the budget, there's money allocated to meet those obligations. One of the interesting things that he pointed out to me, which I think is very excellent, he wants us to look at shade structure over the picnic tables. Remember, the old tables had umbrellas, they, the new ones do not. But because these picnic tables are rectangular and not square, finding an umbrella that's, that suits that needs is difficult, but we did find a company out of Germany that has a rectangular umbrella, six thousand dollars per umbrella. We put money in this year's budget, it's very unique, you'll see it, but we, we did put money. So we do have money set aside for us to explore those items should the council decide to do so. Any questions on the recreation budget? Moving on, since it's getting late, going to the the resident services department. Mr. Gliddes Department.
By the way, just speaking about lifeguard while we're here, lifeguard on duty on Sunday?
Every day. Every day, there's lifeguards on duty, and sometimes on Sundays, we have two lifeguards depending on how, if there's parties. Now, if the lifeguard is at lunch, then the beach attendant takes over watching the waters, and a sign goes out that says lifeguard, it's, it's not on duty. Because they are allowed to have a one-hour lunch.
Maybe he was up in the booth somewhere.
Or, or they were patrolling the ocean. But Lieutenant Diaz, we're looking to that, asking tomorrow morning. Moving on to the, moving on to the resident services department. The reason the personnel ju- number jumped is because, don't forget, that we moved the receptionist into this department. Um, we moved the receptionist into this department, and Michael's part-time employee is also in this department, uh, Giselle, who is in this department. Um, and also all of your activities. So last year was a one-seventy-six, we are decreasing it this year, because we don't have the ninetieth anniversary this year. So we decreased the recreational programming, so it's a hundred and forty-six. Last year, the department last year, the department went over by five thousand dollars. Am I looking at this right? This year, we're over by sixty-four thousand dollars, but it was all money that you approved for Halloween and the ninetieth and the giveaways.
Speaking of Halloween, real quick, um, I know that the police chief and Gio and when you guys did the meeting greets with the neighbors, I know you guys got a lot of comments about Halloween, right?
And we have a big com- comprehensive master plan on how we're gonna handle Halloween at your October meeting, we're gonna show you the OX plan. That shows you where parking's gonna be, where people can't come in, we're not doing wristbands, we're gonna make it difficult for you to come into our community, we're gonna make you park on ocean.
What, 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 what?
Michael, uh, one of the thing that people have mentioned to me
Specific.
Is uh
For non-residents.
For the rides for little kids, if you had rides for, not little, little kids, but bigger kids.
We do have activities, not necessarily rides, for our teen-aged kids, yes. But they're not rides, they're activities, so there's like that
They don't like activities, they like
No, it's like la- no, it's, it, we can afford those rides. So we have like laser tag is one of them.
There are some things that that will work for older kids as opposed to just the toddlers.
Ken loves rides.
But you aren't gonna see, but you aren't gonna see a fifteen thousand dollar merry ground or a twenty thousand dollar Ferris wheel. That's not gonna happen probably.
And I have to commend Michael on uh the improvement of the newsletter over the last twelve months. Has really improved dramatically, did a great job.
Any questions on resident services department?
Paying for itself, making revenue, what's it?
No, so our newsletter does not make enough revenue to cover its expenses, and we don't have staff dedicated to sell ads. We, Michael and his team try as best they can. Any and all of our employees are always encouraged to sell ads. We do have a, we do have a ad share program, so then if you sell an ad, you get a percentage of the sale of the ad. Um, that's available to our employees. We are competing with Golden Beach Living Magazine.
Has that hurt us?
Who's making a killing off of it, and we're not charging them enough.
You guys can always recommend friends to advertise in the Golden Beach magazine. In our magazine, I always tell people.
That is your general fund budget. Any questions on your general fund budget? As a reminder, your general fund budget this year sits at audience, I promise we'll be quick. This year's general fund budget sits at nine point six million dollars. Moving on to your four funds, your law enforcement trust fund, as you know, the law enforcement trust fund is your your strike force officers, um, we do not
How much uh cash is there?
So we currently have
I'm sorry.
Law enforcement trust fund? So we currently have in the law enforcement trust fund, now again, the way the law enforcement trust fund works is
I don't have a
It's our, our forfeited asset dollars. We currently have three points up, we have, currently have three point two million dollars in the pipeline. Two million of which we pledged through the new city hall, and currently in our law enforcement trust fund accounts combined, we have approximately four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. In reserves.
Two point two, you said is total?
We're saying, we're two, two million. Yeah. If, if we need more, we're not pledging the full money that's in the pipeline, because we don't know when it's gonna come. But we do have about three point two in the pipeline. Any questions to the law enforcement trust fund?
How much cash right now?
Four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Moving on to debt service, your debt service fund pays for your debt obligation, so it's nine hundred and four thousand dollars, and that's through your debt service millage. Any questions about your debt service fund? Your capital improvement fund, three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, the bulk of it, two hundred and forty-two thousand is set aside for your reserves. We are spending about sixty thousand dollars in getting the RFP and the design criteria funded. And Mr. Luff, if you're walking from home, your fund, the one that you love to speak about, um, the stormwater fund. So as you know, our stormwater fund is a stormwater private utility. We do charge the stormwater fund two hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis to cover the cost of, of the administration. The stormwater fund is responsible for all of this cost, and we do have repairs that go on. Just this morning, I approved a twenty thousand dollar repair in North Park because the fourth main in North Park broke, and we does need to be repaired. Your stormwater fund does not have a large contingency, it only has about eighty thousand dollars of contingency. Um, we do also owe the general fund one point six million. Forget my number, I don't remember what the number is, but it owes the general fund over one point six million dollars. And your stormwater fee is currently set at fifty dollars per month for EEU. And we do not recommend any increases to the stormwater fee at this time. With that said, mayor, that is your capital, general, and your proprietary funds for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-eight.
So with that, I'm gonna open any other council comments? So I'll close it to council, any public comments on the budget for the military? So with that, I'll close it to the public.
Mayor, before you take, before you take a vote, let me just say uh two quick things. Um, we take our budget process very seriously. We understand that we're the custodians of our residents' tax dollars. And we'd like to just, you know, share with our residents that each of your department directors who are here today, they look at every penny that we spend. They look at every expenditure, they recycle plans, they recycle materials. We know that you entrust us every year to watch your money. We have among the strongest and tightest internal controls. Uh, just when the, you know, when the mayor and I was meeting, meeting with the banks on the civic center, they were asking us to do things that we don't allow in Golden Beach. We don't allow ACHs, we don't allow checks that aren't two signatures, we don't allow POs that don't have three signatures. So we have a lot of internal controls, we vet every vendor, we know who our vendors are, we make sure that our vendors aren't taking advantage of us. And when we think that our vendors are taking advantage of us, and Mike will be the first to sho- show you, we kick them out, we find new vendors. Because at the end of the day, we know that it's your money that we're being asked to guard. And as you know, whenever we can, we try to save you money so we can grow our general fund, and we're not just wasting it. And so with that said, I want to thank publicly Maria Camacho, our finance director, for helping me throughout the summer, putting our budget together. Mita Perez, who puts together all the verbiage and all your goals and objectives. Your directors who come up with their new initiatives every year, and one person who you've never met, her name is Jennifer Page. Jennifer Page is the one who puts together our budget and makes it look so beautiful. So Jennifer, where are you? At the moon party tonight, have fun, thank you. I stand in recess, or I stand, that's it, I'm done. Let me shut up.
Okay, with that, uh, close it to public comments. We're gonna vote on first the military.
Yes, we are.
And then we'll go back to the budget. So first, we're here to approve uh D one, a resolution that a town council adopting a proposed military for the fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-first. I did not get a, 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 approval, so someone's approved, say aye.
Aye.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, with that, we'll go to a roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Uh, you want Einstein back? Ben back? Uh, yes?
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Okay, with that, the
And just, I mean, just let me say that the second reading on this um, adopting a final millage will be September twenty-sixth at six P M.
Yes.
Okay.
With that, we'll go to item number two, the resolution of town council adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, with that, any council comments? Close of the council, any public comments? And there are no changes to the budget as you presented it.
Nope.
So with that, I need a motion.
Motion to
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Okay, perfect. With that, we're gonna move to the comp plan. Okay?
We're gonna close.
Uh, the comp plan.
Let's put the town council meeting recess?
Resess this one.
I got it. Uh, we'll recess the town council meeting. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
With that, we'll move to the uh comp plan, so
Planning agency.
The planning agency. So you want to take attendance one more time for the record, please?
Mayor Singer?
Uh, here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein? Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Here.
Just for the record, today's September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, comp plan uh for uh, town of Golden Beach, time is approximately eight thirty P M. So with that, we're gonna move to C one, an ordinance to town council amending town code to revise rooftop activities.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances to revise chapter sixty-six zoning by amending section sixty-six dash two-six-one, rooftop activities, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
We're gonna vote on this in the regular town council meeting.
You will as, as an item, but for the purposes for now, we simply need a motion to recommend the uh, adoption of this ordinance on second reading and finding that it's consistent with your comprehensive plan.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call on that, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Okay, we'll move to C two.
Motion.
In order to town council amending the town code to adopt a new chapter sixty-two flood.
An ordinance by the town council amending the town of Golden Beach code of ordinances to repeal land development regulations, chapter sixty-two floods, to adopt a new chapter sixty-two floods, to adopt flood hazard maps to designate a flood plain administrator to adopt procedures and criteria for development in flood hazard areas and for other purposes providing for applicability, severability, and an effective date.
Okay, with that, I need a motion to approve, to adopt.
Recommend approval and find consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Motion to to approve.
So move.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
With that, we're gonna close the local planning agency meeting. We're gonna go back to the regular town council meeting. With that, uh, we're gonna go to uh, motion to set agenda, but before, on the Thursday meeting, which is the twenty
Six, it's like six P M.
Six P M, we'll do council comments, we'll do mayor comments, we'll do town manager report. And uh, we'll do all that on Thursday, the twenty-sixth at six P M. Okay, so everyone's agreed with that. So with that, we'll go to motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal items from the consent agenda or changes from the agenda. I have none. Any council?
None.
Yes, staff?
Yes. On the day as you were provided the backup for the uh, the resolution on bonuses, it's the budget transfer. And we're asking to take item number I out of turn and have item number I held before item number G.
Say it again?
We're asking that you move item I
Quasi-judicial resolution?
Out of turn and have it held before item G. We do have members of the audience that have been here for over an hour and forty minutes, so take them out of turn. Uh, so they don't have to sit through the ordinances review. So we do have two quasi-judicial, we're asking for them to be taken out of, out of order.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. So with that, uh, before that, we'll go to Good and Welfare. Anyone from Good and Welfare?
There's none.
None, okay. Uh, skip Good and Welfare. So with that, we'll go to the quasi-judicial resolution. Anyone that's gonna speak on any of these uh variances, please stand and face the town clerk, raise your right hand. If you don't do it, you can't speak during the, the variance request.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, with that, we'll move to quasi-judicial resolution, I six, a resolution of town council approving a variance request for three ninety-nine Golden Beach Drive to permit an entry canopy, a canopy to encroach at varying uh front setbacks.
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing and approving variant, a variance request for the property located at three nine-nine Golden Beach Drive, Golden Beach, Florida, three-three-one-six-zero, to permit an entrance canopy to encroach at varying, varying front setbacks from twenty-six point zero-five feet at the curb of the north front property line to thirty-three point twenty-seven feet from the south front property line, instead of the thirty-five foot front setback outlined in the code.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Mayor, let me just uh, on behalf of, in the interest of time and on behalf of the applicant. So because this house is on the corner, the radius forces us to have to seek a variance as a release to these, this overhang that they wanted to provide over the doorway.[1777.04] So if you see here, and it's in your, it's in your document that I wanted to show you in the color format. So this variance is to provide a shelter to cover the doorway. If it wasn't on the corner lot, most of it would not need a variance, but because it's on the corner lot, it requires a variance, we do it aesthetically appealing to bring value to the home, and we recommend approval of this, of this overhang. I mean, you said, you said shelter, but it looks like it's...
It's separate.
It's... There's holes, there's holes in it. That's an acrylic piece of plastic that covers it.
Oh, really?
And there's no cover, the doorway.
Oh, it's acrylic?
Yeah, impact glass, impact glass. So it allows natural light to go through it, but it does provide...
This house isn't here yet, right?
Yeah, it is. It's on the right by the garden.
Oh, yeah.
Get a great job.
That's a gorgeous house.
So we're recommending favorable approval of this variance. I don't think, I don't think the applicant needs to speak on this matter. Nope.
Any comments from the council?
Beautiful house.
Any counsel in the public?
And just for the record, there was an objection at the BRAB, but if the resident to the, to the south, and I think we've satisfied most of her concerns.
With that, we'll do a roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Good job on that house. Your pleasure. With that, we'll move to item number L7, a resolution to town council approving a variance request for 386 Golden Beach Drive to permit a dock.
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing and approving a variance request for the property located at 386 Golden Beach Drive, Golden Beach, Florida, 33160, to permit a dock to be constructed at a dock length, length of 53 feet 8 inches protruding outside the D5 triangle, town code Section 46-87, proximity of lot line, instead of the permitted approved dock length of 46 feet 8 inches.
Okay. Any a motion to approve?
Motion.
I need a second? Alex?
So Mayor, this particular dock has already been constructed, and it has, when it was going in, it's a concrete dock, there was an overpour of seven feet, combined three and a half feet on each side. And so the renders are there. In most cases, we would ask the applicant to tear it down and start anew, but it's a concrete single pour with rebar. The BRAB was split on this way. They were, they were against it. Their co-reQUIRES, they're against it. We do not think that this was done intentionally. And so the staff is recommending that you approve this variance. We do not believe that it will start setting the precedence. I also take responsibility, because my staff should have inspected the form, 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 form board when they were set up. And we probably will now require stricter inspections. The contractor is responsible for not overpouring and setting it up correctly. We're responsible for inspecting it as well. So there's a little bit of shared blame, although I take 10%, not 90, okay? But, but it would be very difficult to ask for this dock to be torn down to then be rebuilt.
Right.
And you can't just, and you can't just saw cut it, because then the structural integrity of the rest of the dock is affected. So I normally would not advocate in favor of something like this. If it were, if it were a wooden dock or any other dock, I would say it's easy to take it down. Because it is a single pour concrete dock, I reluctantly am recommending approval of it. I don't know, the applicant needs to get into more details, but I know the council has some questions. Did I state the process, the issue correctly?
No, I looked at it and it was a mistake. I mean, contractor's fault, but it's, it's, in my opinion, immaterial. And also, to take it down, you're talking about moving pilings and stuff, it's not right to ask the contractor, the resident, to endeavor that.
In addition, there was no objection from the neighbors.
Well, that's the question I had. If I'm the adjoining neighbor, trying to get my boat out, does that corner affect me trying to egress?
I need you to come up to the microphone, please.
He's always here with something.
Well, he does most of the time.
He's been here as long as I've been here. Actually, he's been here longer than me.
As long as I've been here.
Name me now, just for the record.
That's 21 years.
Kirk Lothburn with Ocean Consulting Offices in Coral Gables, Florida. I only had one comment, is that we meet our side setbacks. We also meet our extension water, where there was an approval granted for that in the original. So we don't encroach on the neighbor's setback or any of the side setbacks. We actually meet it. The reason this happened is because if you considered that the property line was right on the seawall, then we would have met our zoning triangle requirement. The fact is that the property line is actually inside the seawall, which is why you see that weird setback requirement, which created the confusion for the contractor when it was built.
What corner are we talking about here?
Both corners.
No, we're... This is the south corner.
Which corner? Show me.
This is the south.
The corner of concrete, which, what am I looking?
That last piling.
On the picture. Are we talking about this corner?
No, right here.
You're talking about that corner?
Yeah.
Okay. Where's the, where's the next property line?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
So this is 10, this is 10, this side setbacks 10 feet?
Yeah, 11 feet on one side and 10 on the other. 10 feet is the standard when...
So if the guy has, trying to get out...
Does not affect it.
It doesn't affect it all.
Who's the neighbors on this?
So Isaac Mendel is on one side, I believe, the south? Am I right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is that yours?
Did they have no objection?
They didn't mind, right?
Nobody had objection?
All right, any questions in the comment, comments?
There are lots of voters, no conflict. I see your hands.
Look, I, here's my only comment. I like these guys. They do great work. We have so many people coming in here, though, in the past, that have said, oh, it was contractor error, it was a screw up. And we don't, we've never listened to that in the past. You've been adamant, any, any type of problem, I, I want to grant this, I want to vote for it. I'm just, you said it doesn't affect precedent, it's not going to set a precedent. I just don't know how it doesn't, and how we don't have every single person coming in here saying, hey, September 19th, you guys approved this variance, it was a contractor area, ours is a contract area. That's my biggest concern on this.
I, I share that concern. And like I stated earlier, there's two, there's two driving issues here. One, the property line and where the form board was, was put together. And two, this is a structurally poured dock. The cost of replacing the dock outweighs what the encroachments are. We're looking at three and a half feet on the tips of the dock.
It's immaterial.
It doesn't go, it doesn't go north, it doesn't go north to south.
But you're now, you've never, ever before given a cost. I'm, I'm just, I'm talking about for future things, because we're going to have people coming in here.
Well, in future things, you bring up a good point. In future, the town is going to do a better...
It's going to monitor it.
No, they're going to do a better deal, better job of overseeing, making sure that...
So we're saying there was a pre-inspection of this, and somebody saw it, and they said, oh, that looks good, oh, they approved.
Well, it wouldn't matter, because it already pours, so it doesn't matter if it was a pre-inspection.
No, at, at form board, we should have done some, we should have probably asked for a site survey, and we didn't. It's not our respons, let me be clear. It's not our responsibility to do so. And I mean, more than...
Like we've told a lot of people...
I mean, did they submit a plan?
They did.
Did we approve that plan as they built it?
But the plans, no. That's the issue. So when the staff, when the staff of the company was out there and they did the form board, they oversized it by three and a half feet on each side.
Oh, they didn't follow their plan.
Now let, don't speak to that matter.
And, and just, just before I finish, I don't ever remember us approving something that was built in...
You have.
By the...
Oh, yeah, we have.
You have.
Yeah, so we have.
Repeat, repeat.
There was a roof on South, on South Island.
Chimney stacks on North Island?
North Island, right.
South Island, somebody built a roof that wasn't approved.
And a deck.
You do, you do have, you do have a...
And, and he came in here, he says, well, my contractor did it, and it was my fault.
The chimneys on North Island.
Were built.
South Island, seawall.
The South Island seawall.
But we've done it before, but go on, Troy, what were you going to say?
And again, i- if this was an irresponsible contractor who tried to hide it...
Ben Shumiller.
So we, we take a lot of, we take a lot of factors in, in recommending, you know, here's a contractor who was responsible, who brought it to our attention, who said, look, we made a mistake, you didn't catch it. We, so there's a lot of stuff that we, we give credit for. If it was a contractor who tried to hide it and place blame and say...
We're not doubting that the contractor is a good guy. That we know.
And so that's...
What happened, I can hear us, what happened from the plan?
Talking with your mouth full.
Go ahead and speak. As much as I tried to avoid that.
Where are you calling him?
Sir?
So definitely my fault. I mean, the, we had plans...
Troy Wilson.
Troy Wilson, Southeast Marine.
Thank you.
We had, like, been working in Golden Beach forever, and we've always kind of measured from the, where the property line was always the wet face of the seawall. So we all, we knew about the, the Golden Beach triangles, and that's where it's set. The property line on this one happens to be back in the yard. So if the seawall had to be ripped out, we'd have to move the seawall back. It was my fault, because when the plans came through, and originally, it was, it was all set up that way in the plan, my office unstapled the voided sheet. You know how there'll be a voided sheet? They copied the work orders, the work orders went out to the guys, and then we build it wrong. And I didn't realize it until it was poured. And unfortunately, you can't just go cut three and a half feet off, because then you have the rest of the concrete dock is unsupported. So if you rip it all out, she has to take the whole top of the seawall off, too, because the steel is sticking out of the, out of the cap.
You're talking about three and a half feet.
I'm throwing mercy at the court here.
You want to sleep tonight? First time he's going to be able to sleep in weeks.
Any council comments?
What's the cost? What would be the cost of ripping it out?
It'd be, it'd be redoing the whole top of thing, probably 40, $50,000.
No, any com, any other comments? Close of council, any public comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
That's good, that's good.
He can't abstain, but he cannot vote based upon a apparent conflict of interest.
Councilmember Einstein?
Don't let it happen again.
Yep.
Motion passes.
Thanks, guys. Okay, with that, we're done with quasi-judicial resolution. We're going to go back to ordinance, the second reading. Item number G3, an ordinance to town council amending town code to revise rooftop activities.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida...
Hi, guys. Thank you.
Amending the town's code of ordinances to revise Chapter 66 zoning by amending Section 66-261, rooftop activities, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
All right, this is what we just went over in the other meeting.
Yeah, this is...
And to the comp plan?
Yeah.
This is, any comments?
Nope.
Close of the council, public. Close of public, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Item G4, an ordinance to town council amending town code to adopt a new Chapter 62 flood.
An ordinance by the town council amending the town of Golden Beach code of ordinances to repeal land development regulations, Chapter 62 floods, to adopt a new Chapter 62 floods, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a flood plain administrator to adopt procedures and criteria for, for development in flood hazard areas and for other purposes, providing for applicability, severability, and an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
This too was on the comp plan. Any comments? Any public comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving to item number H, ordinance is first reading. Ordinance H five, ordinance of town code, amending the town code to revise chapter fourteen environment by amending section fourteen point eight six, lawnmower and power tools.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances to revise chapter fourteen environment by amending section fourteen dash eighty-six lawn mowers and power tools, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Any a motion to approve? I need a second. Okay, this is what we went over in the last meeting we discussed. But we changed the hours to Saturday and Sunday from ten to eight. Any comments?
Mayor, during my briefing with the council, one of the councilmembers asked that we make sure that this only applies to motorized issues. So if you're using clippers, you're still allowed to do work before ten A M. This is only for blowers, mowers, landscapers, adgers, anything that has a motorized unit.
The language just prevented anyone from doing any work and I think it was just our attention was intrigued with the.
Yeah, so when we looked at the, when we looked at the item one more time, it's talking about operate any power lawnmower or power tools for landscaping. So we believe that the language gives us enough clarity and it gives the police enough jurisdiction to enforce.
Were we going to change it to six?
That's what I thought and I asked him, you say, he said eight. I thought we did say six.
I thought he said eight was too late.
Right.
Why would we do eight if during the weekdays it's six?
Right.
It's not.
It is.
It's not.
It's summertime, it stays late till nine o'clock.
It's not.
If you have people.
Eight o'clock is late summer.
So two things, one, it's not six o'clock during the week, it's eight. It's always been eight and it's currently eight now on the weekends and there hasn't been an issue with the night issue. So I understand that you want to change it, but we don't have an issue with the closing time, but we have an issue with the starting time. If you want us to change it to six, then, then we have, we'll have very time. Right now, you're allowed to cut your grass and have landscapers in town until eight P M. Every day of the week.
That's fine then, with me.
Not only that, we're. Until we don't have an issue. You know, one of the, one of the issues that I, that I see is whenever it starts raining, these guys have to stop. And it stops again and then they, like, they stick out a little bit and so I just think that gives them the extra luxury. I don't think they want to be out there at eight o'clock.
By the way, the six o'clock is for construction, not landscaping.
That's why to me it kind of followed suit that if you stop.
Sometimes you.
They like same time.
Not only that, but sometimes the homeowner gets home from work and they want to talk to the landscapers in terms of what they want and when they're working, they can't do so.
Okay, so let's talk about this.
Let's keep it at eight.
How, how big of a problem is this?
It's not at all.
At night it's not, but in the, in the morning it is.
Okay, so let's leave the night alone.
I think the morning.
Personally, like, the only time I, like, I do exactly that, I come home from work.
And you cut your door.
No, I mean, I'm meeting my gardeners, I'm meeting everyone, going, thinking like six, seven o'clock.
We're not using power tools.
We think the ordinance as presented is stellar.
You want to hear, you want to hear about a noise or decibel problem? It's dogs barking.
Oh.
Oh, God.
You.
Not you.
Let's stick to the subject.
G B.
Any, you fine with that, eight? You fine with that, eight? Okay. Any other comments? Sure, your power tools, you use your power tools, eight, you're fine? Okay. Any council, public comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Ah, yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, I had a hand crank torque and that's still being used?
There'll be a second reading, so you can go at this end if you like.
The second reading, we'll talk, we're bringing dog.
This doesn't have to go to the lap though, right?
No.
Okay.
Ah, yes, it will, but before second reading. Before second, it is, it's part of the land development code.
The dogs barking.
So what? Nothing. I mean, anything that's regulated.
We're trying to make sure that we don't make a mistake like we did the last time by not advertising the laps. So that's what we're trying to make sure.
Town attorney, are we good?
We're good. We're good.
We just don't know.
Yeah, we're good.
We're totally good. We could do something before second reading. He's not confused.
He looks confused.
I was confused.
I messed him up.
I was confused. I'm corrected now.
You're correct, you're fine?
I'm fine.
You're not puzzled?
No.
You don't need any power tools?
We're going to spend money where we need to spend money.
Would you explain that budget again, please?
Don't wind him up, he loves talking, right? Consent, item number J, consent items, the following three items on the consent agenda. Item number J eight, official meeting of the August twentieth, two thousand nineteen regular town council meeting. On there, number J nine, a resolution to town council rescinding resolution number two six one one point one nine. And item number J ten, a resolution to town council approving agreement with the city of Sunny Isles Beach to share license plate readers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
You have to object to the language because I don't think number J is an actual number, but other than that, I'm okay with it.
Letter J, sorry. I'll put that under dog barking and power tools. Item number K resolutions and K, item K town resolutions. K eleven, resolution of town council approving amendment two to the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year operating budget for the proposed awarding employee bonuses.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida approving amendment number two to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year operating budget for the purposes of awarding employee bonuses and amending the originally adopted budget.
Any motion to approve? I'm sorry.
Providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Let's talk about this.
Sure.
Anyone?
What's the total?
Eighty-six, eighty-six thousand, eighty-six, eighty-four thousand five, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Can we just take the first one off? The first person here, just that bonus.
Oh, who could that be?
Ooh.
We can discuss it. No, any other comments?
Mayor, I do have the request, we are still missing two evaluations as managers that we need before we can submit bonuses. So if you have not submitted your evaluation for my performance, please do so. We are missing two.
Any count, public comments? With that, we'll go to roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Let me think about it. Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein.
Great.
Motion passes.
I have to say, though, the bonuses, the employees, in my opinion, at town of Golden Beach do a phenomenal job. From the town manager to the public works, to the police department. So I was joking about the bonuses, but the bonuses are very well deserved and well earned. And the finance department, Maria and Lisette, you guys who did the budget this year, town manager, you did a great job, preparation of budget and everything, you guys do a great job. So to show your appreciation, the bonuses are well deserved.
We appreciate it.
And we appreciate that.
From a, a prudence point for the public, as we give these bonuses instead of merit, they, they do have a different aspect to it because the merit would be pensionable and this is not.
And compounding in addition to pensionable.
In regards to you, Alex, I think that after your thirteen years, your loyalty really does shine through, especially in light of the fact that this year, when you took your vacation, you would bold letters sent out, please only call me for an emergency. And your entire vacation was obsessed with the hurricane until you came right back.
The town's my priority.
I think it's very admirable of you, especially since there was no hurricane. Actually, I don't even think we had very much rain.
You get more vacation days for that?
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item K twelve. A resolution to town council reauthorizing the town schedule of building permits and processing fees. Lisette.
A resolution of the town council, the town of Golden Beach, Florida, reauthorizing the town's schedule of building permit and processing fees, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll be brief, but it's important. So we're only asking that you increase by doubling the cost for per linear foot for sidewalk curb and gutter replacement. As you know, we currently charge fifty-five dollars for new construction. The last, the last item? Item number twelve.
Twelve?
Oh, what number, sorry. Number thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. We currently charge fifty-five dollars for new construction, fifty for additions, and twenty-five for remodel. No, if you're remodeling your kitchen, you'd not get charged that. It's only when you start knocking down walls and moving electrical outlets. Asking, we're asking for everyone, we're asking for all three of those fees to be doubled. As you know, currently, the fee today covers less than twenty percent of the actual cost of repair for linear footage in front of a house. By doubling it, we'll get it to forty percent. The town is still eating sixty percent of the cost when it comes to repair curb, gutter, and sidewalk in front of a home. Now, this particular fee does not cover the area in front of your home. This is a citywide fee for all the common elements. If you're under construction and you damaged your sidewalk and you damaged your curb and you damaged your gutter, we do hold and we do cash in your bond. This has nothing to do with the work in front of your house. This is curb gutter work that's replaced throughout the town and most of the common elements. Currently, we cover twenty percent of the cost, we're trying to go to forty percent and hopefully next year, sixty percent. But we eat the bulk of the fee, so we're asking to double those numbers.
I'm a little confused. I thought we talked, when you and I, the proposal you were going to make, you were going to double the number for new construction, but for the renovation, you were going to keep that lower.
So what we did is, so I thought we had two categories, we actually had three categories, so I didn't have a chance to go back on it. So when you and I spoke, we had two categories, remember we said new construction, remodel? We actually have three categories, new construction, additions, and the remodel. And the remodel only applies, so if you're doing your, because your arc concern was the kitchens and the bathroom remodel, would they pay for it? Something insignificant like a kitchen remodel or like new tiles in the bathroom, what it, now, if you're going to like gut the walls of your bathroom and completely make it bigger and blow it out, then you will get charged for that. But if you're just changing like the backsplash of a kitchen or the kitchen cabinets or your minor renovations, we don't charge you the fee. It's only when you're doing extensive renovations and that fee is currently twenty-five dollars, it goes to fifty dollars for the near foot.
For remodel?
For, for major remodels. So like your kitchen, your bathroom, changing the tub and stuff, that wouldn't be.
What is the threshold of where it goes from major remodel to?
So that, it's, it's not, it's not enumerated in the code or in the fee structure. Ms. Epperson and I basically look at each of the applicants and determine whether or not we feel that this fee should be charged for a remodel. An addition is an addition, if you're adding square footage to your home, that's where the addition comes in. And of course, new construction speaks for itself.
So new construction is going to be a hundred and ten dollars per linear foot, right?
Per linear foot.
The, the addition is going to be?
A hundred dollars per linear foot.
I'm sorry, the linear foot is?
The frontage in front of your house. So if you have a fifty-foot lot, it's fifty, fifty linear feet, if it's a hundred-foot lot, it's a hundred linear feet.
If you're just going to do a remodel on a bathroom, you're going to charge them for the whole?
If, if, if I, if I'm just changing the tiles or changing out the toilet, I'm not. But if I'm making my bathroom bigger, taking down a wall or expanding it or adding, then, then yes. So there's.
So it's actually physical structure change in the walls?